Eight fourteen and fifteen. This shouldn't take very long, but Steve's budget is covered by water sewer revenues.
Yeah.
You can't do anything but maintain and expand your system with that. Get through it to roads.
Kind of stuff here, right?
Okay, so what we've decided to do, rather than going over, just discuss any major changes you wish of last year's budget.
Basically, the budget on request this year is the same as last year with one exception, and that's building, maintenance, and repair. We do have the ice protection coming on within the next couple of weeks, and that's going to take my line item this year down under $700. And we also wanted to seal the parking lot last year, but we didn't have enough funding to do it. Last documentation I can find on the time the parking lot was sealed was 2008, so it's been at least eight years since this parking lot's been sealed. So I think it's a very important thing we do. And we also have some roofing issues we went through last night to clean it up and replace some tiles in here that water stains. We've had leaks in this roof for years and years, so I'd like to try to work on getting some of those leaks fixed too, if I use them. But we estimate, we're figuring about $4,000 to seal the parking lot off of what it was back in 2008. 2008 was $3,200.
Was that just the cracks or was that the whole?
That was putting the ceiling. We did the cracks last fall. This was putting the little broom thing when the tractor came in, spread it all out, and then did the striking afterwards for $3,200 back in '08. So figuring a rough interest and everything else, about four grand is what we're figuring. We tried to get them in here to give us a bid on it or give us an estimate, and we couldn't get them in time for my budget to be submitted, so we went $4,000.
Has current estimates in my account?
Okay. Other than that one line item, my budget is exactly the same as last year. I haven't asked for anything additional. The only other change is that I have in the budget is in the rural fire part of it. And this year, we will not be paying a payment on our rescue truck. That truck was paid off last year. And we had an $8,000 line item for education and training because of our firefighter one-two program. They completed that now, so I cut that line item in half on page forty-four. We had $8,000 there, so we can do the flash here. That is on page forty-four, sixty, twenty-one.
Our budget, you know, they're all just pointed out, like, for carryover, and their total revenue should be a hundred and fifty dollars to $74,000 as well.
This bill, we were moved into in 2006.
That's what I thought.
So last time you say it was in '08?
Yeah, that's the last documentation I can find, and that won't say for a performance to go ahead and do it.
And we looked at cost, trying to boot yourself versus hiring a contractor. It's probably more expensive to boot yourself. Five-five gallon buckets.
It's not easy.
And it's a nasty job.
Oh, I've done it before, and it is.
And then you have to buy new clothes and new boots, which is pretty much.
But if you put it down, it's a whole different process. He just stays.
What are we still talking about?
$4,000.
Ceiling of the parking lot.
It's the same as last year?
With the exception of $4,000 more for the building of the parking lot.
What type of roofs up here, I think, are the ones?
It's metal, I'm not sure.
They're stuck there?
Yeah.
Masters exposed?
Uh, yes, they are. There's screws in.
Is this flat or is this?
This part is pitch, back part is flat.
But the leaks are in the.
In the pitch.
Into that room, yeah.
Yeah. We had jewelry come in once or twice after it was built, and they never could seem to figure out what was going on or fix it. So we've had these leaks basically almost from day one.
Is that meant to be able to tape on the seams?
Pardon?
There's a, I mean, there's a way to seal and stuff. Most of the time it leaks on the seams and stuff. You have to pull the masters and be able to tape the seams. It's a sure way to patch it, unless it's a flashing issue.
What I'm hoping to do is the company that's coming in, usually the ice protection, is a company called Junior Construction out of the lead-up.
No way. No way. I can tell you stories about that guy. He's an absolute crook.
Be careful.
Oh, we'll figure it out. In that case, we can find somebody else.
Right.
If that's what needs to be done. I would like to, after we get the ice protection on, get somebody in here and try to figure out what's going on with the trip too.
And if I can help, I'd be glad to, because I have part of your experience doing it.
Yes. Never opposed to having somebody else give some information, sir.
So, so with that, with the rescue truck, the real park fund, we would be in pain. That's historic, human-like, and start growing.
Yeah. And then the real fund also, like I started saying, education training last year, we had $8,000 set aside because of firefighter one-two. I cut that in half because I want to keep some there. I do have some new guys coming on that I do want to send to class, but we don't need the full $8,000 sitting there. And also the $12,000 we had set aside for the motor for the van, since that's been done, I cut that in half too, just so we have miscellaneous flood funds for major repairs if we need something.
Questions, Jeff?
Thanks. What year's our rescue?
The rescue is 2008. The other bumpers are 2006. We bought that and built the building at the same time, and then two years later, we built the Henry Rescue. Which brings up the point too, I'm not sure if we've all thought about it, but we're still down a truck here on this apartment. And in less than six years, I'm going to have another truck sitting out there that's going to be 30 years old. So somehow we need to start looking at that again, or I don't know how to go about it just yet. It's something that we've got to keep in our minds.
Well, it hasn't been, it hasn't been often born. Again, there've been various attempts to try to find, figure out, find it, that issue. So it's not, it's not that we're not watching. It's not sitting over there and being forgotten. There's definitely some discussions of trying to figure it out. I mean, it's a huge hurdle. We've got to get you the equipment they need.
Same with all due, I'm not complaining, I'm just providing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
The water budgets, thirty-one to thirty-four, and the sewer, thirty-five to thirty-four.
Major changes? Cuts. Yeah. The water sales have not been increasing, it's decreasing, so Steve's just adjusting the budget to reflect prediction of lower revenues because of this water sale.
What would you activate to the water industry? Would stop the river?
Everything you buy now is more efficient. Toilette's take three gallons of flush, now take 28 to 1.2. Everything uses less water.
On what kind of volume are you talking? As a percentage of difference?
Gallons or dollars?
Percentage. How much is it? Four percent less, percent less?
It was a million, total revenue from a million nine in this year. Looking at the picture.
So it's a relatively small decrease, but it's definitely.
About a month's worth of water.
So the biggest savings realized went on line items.
If you look through there, you'll see the reduced sweat quality.
Keeping a lot of number.
Sixty-one oh five. We've had about 20,000. That's a direct relation to what it says.
Okay.
Yeah, I said, okay. Material is chemical, that's all going to be direct relationship, straight across. Safety supplies, we purchased some stuff last year, some shoring equipment, we purchased it. It's not good this year. It's $5,000. It's not their highest year. The electric utilities, sixty-seven ten. Twenty thousand out of there, straight across.
Is that real? Sixty-five, that much? Yeah?
See, that's why I was asking about the percentage. I don't, dollars don't mean much to me. If you have, if you have a reduction in sales based on your revenue, based on your prediction, as a percentage, where you take twenty out here or not there, all those real numbers, do they relate to the percentage of decrease in water?
Didn't really relate directly to the decrease in water, not only the customer decrease.
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand. Are they just, are they real over?
Yes.
And not everything is proportionally elastic. Some things just won't go down as much as others based on the production percentage.
If it's possible, all fall, but just because you're out of your production as you're decreasing.
Correct. Live bar facility, electric, they have demand. Once something comes on there, they hit peak for the month. That's what you get charged for the month. What happens, ten times a day or that?
I didn't know that line. That's about.
It's in the records, right?
Yeah, that's similar, let me just, that's similar to what happens in the pump site?
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah, we've done slashes, five thousand, five thousand.
And then there was some small cuts throughout the whole thing, just one bit here, one bit there. Probably the biggest one would be infrastructure improvement. I wanted to be the budget, we're just to be quite a bit out of there.
Do you have any capital equivalent?
No, I'm not purchasing any equipment. We got the tractor. We gotta do it in a while, right? What's that, thirty thousand? No, that's for the chemical treating of two wells.
Oh, okay.
We used to try to do one well a year, but by the time it's cheaper, we do it two at a time, that's about $6,000.
Thanks. All on good, Jay?
Yes, we just received a DNR inspection back on our water towers. One screen needs replaced, point-based tank, but that's fine. Actually, I think they already did that.
Little sewer, thirty, thirty-five. Sewer side's pretty similar to what it was last year. Capital expenditures on this one would be, as a result of our GIS program last year that we started, we're going to come roll over into this year. We found, I don't have the count with me, but the number of manholes that we brought up to bring were buried, about $6,000 in that grass. All the data, all the located manholes, the flow lines, all the information that they collected to produce the map. I was at 15,000 in here for the production. Somebody's sit down and transport all this data and make the most accurate maps.
So if you have a decrease in water production, you just want to pass a decrease in treatment, right?
Well, okay. How can revenues people help with sewer down? Were there portions being, or not, or different in their products?
Oh, consider a bigger rate.
Was there any, you could create a plant of low rain?
We had to bypass our UV system, which required a report to DNR, but nothing, looking out of the road here.
Any rain?
Hey, y'all, stay.
It's, yeah, we're page five.
What is it?
Legislative Department.
Page five.
Going to not have, we added the cost for that energy loan, and then the decrease is because we don't have to capture the sales tax to.
What?
The energy loan.
There's a lot, no, it's not.
The energy loan that we got from streetlights is in here as an expense, but it's also offset by opposing revenues in general, so that's a walk. And deduction in the capture sales tax, you know, seventy-one oh two.
Yeah.
Those are money, it's money that we had to spend in order to administer the TIF. So I believe that, and we don't have any on my eyes. That's after, didn't make a change. The dollar went down because of the rate eliminated. Judicial is support system, page six. No change. Administration is the office, basically. No change. $200. Increase in.
So we don't know what the cost of insurance is?
Health insurance? We're warning you back for the increase, hopefully percentage point higher than actual cost, so we're expecting at least, we're going to go with that. There's some slight changes in deductibles, but the base coverage stays the same, so nobody's losing benefit, but pick it up. Well, you won't experience any change. Use the service, then you can have a higher deductibles. For a six percent increase, our current, the provider had eleven percent exposed. And we thought it was a state, it's a little ridiculous, and they explained this, and it didn't offer us an explanation.
There's seven percent reflected in the budgets, and it's.
We expect a decrease of the six percent. Voice change. The number didn't, even though there's been a rate increase, it looks like the same number because of the change in our demographic. Some liabilities went off, hired some younger people.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Questions on that?
Community development, that was Carlos' budget.
Yeah.
I think the only thing you need to go back to on that, not right now, but that extra $5,000, just depending on how things go. I'm not speaking for everybody here, but I think depending on how things go with this first $5,000 that we talked about, but not been satisfied with yet.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, we're done. Another meeting, where we'll only cover the sample. So adjusted at that time or any time prior to the budget, I mean, this September. It's time to work that out.
They have yet to call me for.
I don't have to get spent, but if you're not, don't just be using it.
They're not going to spend, I think Parkport would.
Pardon?
If they're not going to spend, I think Parkport would.
I think Parkport's a count, remind them, and how they sort of, I think that would be the best way. We've got to be careful about that, because we're likely to lose some of somebody in Parkport, so this is what we get, this is what we get. And that, all of us are decision-making, everyone's form. I still think our balance didn't foot out of water, being a foot underwater, and why we can't get that fixed. So they're going to fix it because it's their project. And I talk today about it all the time, and nothing's, nothing. It's pretty simple, pick up the phone, we call a fountain company, and sometimes cut a foot. I guess, I hope it's excellent, but maybe not. And then the park finishes, the public finishes the park, and we've got many of them to tell us, it sounds like a family, right? We'll give you the money, but you have to tell us what you're going to spend it for before we read any of it, right? I think that might be the appropriate way to report, as well as this other thing, how are you going to use money, then you can make a more clear decision.
Well, I'll need the request, and I'll. Well, community and economic development.
What's page?
Page eleven.
That's the new, the contingency is the new bourbon portatory that we were previously paying out.
Cemetery. I have bid, the.
Twenty-seven?
I have a bid for the, we discussed whether we should move and replace or overlay, so you said overlay, so I've written the bid request and the contract. I should get that add-in Monday. Hopefully, that work will be done September.
I know there's some of the gray stuff, but they're caved in, like the central farm or something.
Which, which.
Maybe harder, though. Are they new? In what area?
In what part of?
What part?
Looking at it.
By the wall. Square by there by the wall.
On the left-hand side, as you're looking at the wall? Towards?
On the earth, down the side of the wall.
Right, but as you're looking at the wall, is it on the left side? Sorry?
I'm trying to think, it's just, you can't miss something.
One thing, hey, Martin, how you doing? I dropped it out, was maybe put in here, had some trees along the road. We like, like in the upper part, just maybe a little nicer, I think. There were, you know, those old trees that sit in the upper part that died, and they're replacing them as they die. Although we've never had any trees along the road, the lower part, to make sure we make that a little better. We've got some money, we'd be able to do it.
The cemetery fund is a dedicated fund, so.
Right.
That contract is up this year too, so I don't know if that totally.
That will probably grow up.
Right, and I pardon, while I discussed with you, that lady who was really upset, and I think, Mayor, I think you spoke what we do, and I think it's valid. That guy either needs a sentence game or find somebody else.
Where does this, where does this lady live? Right across?
No, no, she has a family.
She has a memorial cemetery?
No.
No. Yeah, here, cemetery.
They do one damn thing. But she is a family member, family member there, and she's not happy with the way the maintenance is being done. I went and looked at it.
That's same guy?
Part of it might be, part of it might be the contract.
Yeah, you can buy them contract, but he's just going to.
Right, and he does both of them, press them all in, the memorial.
We've got extraordinary summer, grass growing anyway.
Yeah.
Contract didn't anticipate that, so contract says you cut it one time, and you weave it the next time, and then you cut it the next time. Well, if you cut it one time and you don't weave it, the time comes to weave it, and it looks like.
Yeah, that's why it's so immediate.
Yeah, right.
And some people go out there and molder on.
Well, that's what this lady said.
That doesn't help either.
Yeah.
As far as the unevenness goes.
Right.
Who was the contractor?
This, in the year.
Who was?
Oh, it's K and J, last name.
I weren't giving compared, and not entirely so, with what's being taken care of on the other side of the wall. I don't know that you're really, pretty much a dedicated staff that gets to know that.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe compared to that, we probably need to keep up with that.
I'm going to revisit the contract and make sure that the language provides a level of service that we like to see.
Yeah.
I think it does right now, obviously. And, uh, and then we'll even it, it, no, it'll be, or even if he visits.
Yeah, I know.
He was low, he was real low.
At least one, uh. And I remember, I remember that discussion, too, because it was, well, what are we missing here?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
And I had a discussion with him about it, and I, and they said, well, I'm really just kind of moving across, but only to get my name out there, and they, well, you didn't do yourself.
No.
Well, I know at least one resident went over and did the, the, re-deeped the long sidewalk, that's the memorial cemetery on Jefferson. They just said, actually, we couldn't stand anymore.
We went.
Did it ourselves. And.
Where are we at?
Well, we've got some miscellaneous, like special roads.
Oh, good.
That's the seventy-five thousand dollars that's sitting in our account, it's going to carry over.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight? Yeah. That may get used up right at the beginning of the year, right? Probably not anymore this year, but right at the beginning of what next year's budget will be.
Well, I.
Depends how fast that happens.
I talked to Paul Arnold yesterday, and he was working with Bo Manos, getting some spec put together. Dean was out of town this week, so he'll talk to him later, and we'll find out more about that. But, you know, depending on.
Yeah.
They're going to spend up to seventy-five thousand for the market improvement, if we still get to use this money. And it'll probably be used on Chadwell, and then we'll have money to do other things with. Hopefully, I think we should be able to get it all done this year, depending on how long it takes to get, you know, the design work. Anything, we're going to do improvements to Chadwell Lane and the entrance, we're going to have to have a set of plans, and that's going to take a while, so.
How does it become the city's responsibility to approve a access to a business? Is that the hospital replaced this road after it tore it up?
A couple of days.
Half, right, half.
They threw in some.
Well, I mean, it's just like a developer comes and builds a bunch of houses, and he comes to us and wants us to take responsibility for the changes. Right? We don't have to do that.
Well.
And, and, I don't know, I guess the contractor or the owner of the project sort of didn't anticipate.
You do have to do that, and your code, the code says if a developer does that, and he builds these streets according to D standards.
Does he expect, yeah.
You'll take them over.
Sure.
In this case, lots of jurisdictions require traffic studies and traffic impact, and, and when developers create a load that wasn't there before, they, they, they have to do something about it. Our code doesn't provide for that. So, uh, he proposed this, he's using a street, you know, get, who proposed it? Owner of, cares that, give a building permit, but we couldn't. I didn't have, I didn't have any way of addressing that issue.
Well, I was under the impression that he was out of property, but it turns out he isn't. You know, I was under the impression he was as far out as he could go, but I mean, it's a shame, he couldn't carve out a little more so they could continue to use the old entrance rather than putting all that traffic back on Chadwell, you know? But as you say, we can't do anything by legally, should we make provisions?
I can, in the future, I can work on a vision, I, I, sure.
You know, we just want to make sure that, you know, that we don't get it, the citizens don't get a big bill for something that only affects a very small number.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's what bothers me about it, is in fact, we're in, in our city, but.
I think we're doing to Chadwell aren't because of the care center.
No, why in the world would we do to Chadwell if it wasn't for the care centers?
That entrance, the intersection of Chadwell and the highway, it's effective in any way. Now, what kind of has brought it to light is anticipation.
Increase traffic, right.
Yeah, it should have been done a year ago. When Bell Pass was building strong, the traffic that had at that time.
You were talking about a new development, so if somebody comes in and adds building lots, builds the roads, they have to bring those up to the city specs and stuff. That's not an existing city, really, like this one is. When they build a new road and something, there's those all that would be for city specs.
The city doesn't have, the city doesn't have a set of specs.
To want to build, start with personal development in our, you may have to make some off-site site road improvements.
Absolutely, oh, yeah.
Getting their permit, based on the traffic spec.
Yeah.
They don't have it.
I don't know what they're going to do up there on the front end, I mean, they haven't addressed that, there's still going to be an entrance on the sixty, but, you know, the traffic. You know, there's not just going to be parking up in front now, it's all in back. Deliveries in back, I think there's still going to be some patient visiting access up there, but what is now there's nothing up there, is that the structure?
Okay. K nine is, we agreed, is bid for maintaining their K nine service, and we're expecting a thousand dollars in donations. Budget is a thousand five hundred twenty three cents. Based on the amount that we pay for food. We don't do there anymore, it's like. The downtown two fund, uh, is kind of a dollar in, dollar out, but we just have to kind of estimate what we think the sales tax proceeds will be, and. Figure the expenditures a hundred percent on the real estate, there won't be any real estate increment, because our assessments and that difference. But there will be sales taxes on the two, uh, projects we have, Autobahn and KSL U. They're tied to fifty percent of their sales tax increment.
We should be, there's sales tax, if we hit the base and they get nerves, then we shouldn't start the game on the city line. We haven't, we, we haven't.
Yeah. Well, I, well, made one payment to Autobahn. But the fund, just like, the work that needs to be done in the tenth district, you know, is pretty large, dollar item work, so we need to let that fund build. Storm sewers, like that third street, they're part of a certain hotel, you know, it needs to be paving, but in form, the storm sewers, the fact that somebody's paving over something, they have to dig up later, so. Can't do, have to get in and dig it out, fix the storm sewer, and repay it, and put them, you know, ten thousand dollar project, we have a major project.
How do they know it was bad? Cameras?
Have prepared. They exposed it, seen some concrete patches in there.
Oh, reasonable? Is that reasonable?
But I, no, not in the last four years. Levy Fund, just kind of our accounting for, for the levy district, we don't really have any saying that. Our levy. Federal levy fund. Just money we have to use for foot, for, really anything. Yeah. That service fund, again, that's something you have any discretionary good call over.
Then we will wait until we get an idea back, and costs or estimates on the street for sure, and Chadwell before we decide how we're going to welcome it, and our twenty thousand, we got that.
Yeah, we're IDing all this money up, we have, we've already agreed to those two.
Right.
And as soon as I kind of get know what those are, then we can talk about other things. Every year, Sue prepares a, uh, team on what would happen with the impact of your budget, should, should we adjust salaries? Should we need to go, it's not for discussions now.
They're in the morning?
Yeah, they're coming. We'll, uh, pay.
Yeah.
Pay them again, and, uh. And that will be, that, that will be the decision you have to make when we get to the final approval of the budget, the last decision, is whether you want to budget, these however your resources have. But this is the impact sheet, based on those percentages. Any other questions on that? Well, at seven P M.
I have a question. Why am I seeing sewer and water on this?
We split up.
Read the permit.
We allocate their times to sewer and water, so.
That's for the collections.
Office staff. We got Park Office Staff?
Same thing.
Park is the, we still have two employees that come out of the park, that, yeah.
So, I had the opportunity to see Susan's wife in council meeting, as I told, but maybe she's going to be making a presentation tonight, which was there. It'd be well worth it, she's, those are lives, she's.
She's going to present a case of that?
Oh, I've got the eclipse. The eclipse that we're preparing for August seventeenth, May first, two thousand seventeen, and, uh, we'll have a. She's in a, a stoner from, uh, yeah, Lompasoo, Missouri, University of Missouri. She's very engaging, very knowledgeable, she had to stop by behind, go, go watch her.
And where's that at?
At the performing arts. I learned, I learned.
There's no charge.
No charge. We're, you know, we're going to have, and she, she said that, first of all, she said every year, there's a couple of clips of the sun somewhere on the earth, twice a year. Like most of the time it's over the ocean. This is a rare opportunity where it's going to be, you know, over land for ninety minutes, and there are going to be air stations, people are making plans. She says that the, all of our rooms will be full, and there'll be people who want to stay in town, and she, she, she says it's a big deal, there are these, like, these eclipse chasers, and that's what they do. And, uh, then there's kind of the scientific aspect of it, is kind of what I can think of. It's the only time they can actually observe a corona of the sun, and there's a total of those, and they have whatever period they have to study, and it's from that that they gauge what's happening electromagnetically. Sun, you know, it's, it's, it was.
I remember that.
Total.
Yeah, I was thinking that, I was, I was going to say late sixties.
I said the last time.
Last one, maybe fourteen hundreds.
Six hundred years ago, something.
Oh, was it?
Oh.
Well, this is a different deal.
There'll be another one in two years.
They have one late seventies, too.
Yeah, I'm thinking sixty-eight, sixty-nine. Yeah, right. Yeah.
Yeah. So, another, but.
I'm not supposed to look at.
Anybody got any other?
And there's a little more question back about, uh, we have no authority, uh, whenever we issue a building permit, like the section of the care center with E res and N res off of the building like that. We have no authority to, uh, tell them what needs to be done.
We approved the site plan.
No, I mean, outside the site plan, we're having to study in and out there because of the safety issue, like we're facing up there. We have no authority to say US wanting to do it, ask help with the cause of making that, and I can say.
In the state, if they want to put acceleration and acceleration, it's not bad, that's it.
Well, I mean theoretically, we could have not approved the site plan based off that, right? But, I mean, it's like now.
We did not, it required off-site improvements to be made by them under our rules. And could we have rejected the plan and made?
I'm not even objecting, please, just to, you know, take that into consideration. You know, one of the, you know, one of the reasons that Point Base over there is so bad is there's this much asphalt and dirt, right? So whoever built that, the city tuck it over, and it's just fallen pieces, it's amazing that.
So in fairness to whoever built it, how long ago was it? Concrete has a surface life.
Yeah, but, um, yeah, concrete has a surface life, but there's nothing underneath it, it's going to crack and break and be bad, so, yes, it is.
We've had this discussion before.
For specs.
Yes, we had.
We would have hired an engineer to create the specs, and then they would have followed specs, and then all their testing would have to meet it, which is the way it's supposed to work.
You know, that was mid-seventies.
Well, I'm just using that as one example of, you know, that, that building technique is antiquated, and it doesn't even work in the fallen parts, and it's not even replaced.
It's. Lots of people really concrete road people base. If, if.
Today?
Yet to do, if there's adequate concrete, it's all about the quality of what you're putting it on.
Newers Law State Highway built on dirt.
It's, it's all about what's, what's there.
Anything else? For work session?
Okay, we'll have a short work session after our next meeting to talk about Sandra and anything else you want to do, and, uh, try and get some, uh, representation from the Park Board and downtown vice positions to attend that work session.
I think it's all reasonable, but then the state.
Prime, to, to save them, because that's the information you're going to protect.
The way you plan to spend the future.
Well, I, I'm, I have a number of reservations about this signage that I'm there, I think, I want to hear, I think everybody got forwarded that email.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I got an email, I don't want to hear about signage?
It was mentioned in the mail.
That was the lady, what was she, what was she?
She was less concerned about those kinds of things than you're thinking, and she just thought there were better ways to spend that money.
Other, other priorities. Well, I know when you find a group that's actually working and doing things, that's who you have to support. Ideas are wonderful, but if nobody owns a project or an idea, it never gets done. So I mean, personally, the people that are really actually doing things, to me, they, they should give the best consideration. So that's what I, that's what I'm interested in, is how is the organization doing, and what are they getting done? From the Park Board, are they spending the money to touch the most people, right? They got to have broad vision, and, and look at all the parks and, and. They gotta have broad vision, and, and look at all the parks, and, and it'd be nice to see that money, of course, from playgrounds, instead of some of the stuff that we're spending on...
So, it's important, purchasing, and using, like, like, rest, but...
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not mad at them, I do, but I want to include it out, for them, and I think that'll, that'll catch on, you know, people may be more easy about moving, but they say, yeah, we did these things.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Any, the party.